Don't call me George, call me Melissa. Welcome to Disturbing the Peace with Pastor John Amancukwu. Thank you so much for tuning in. I have so much to talk to you about. Woo, listen, it's been a busy, busy tour, traveling the country, speaking at school boards. I've been to now ten different states addressing issues that are near and dear to my heart. In particular, talking about gender theory and queer theory. This indoctrination in the public school system where children are being corrupted and perverted by librarians, by teachers, by school board leaders, by authors, and by book companies like Scholastic, which we'll get into today as well. I have now been to Virginia, North Carolina, New Jersey, California, Nevada, Florida, Louisiana, Colorado, Idaho, and Pennsylvania. And I plan on going to twenty different counties in 2024. The work must be done because I am concerned about our children. I can care less about the sentiments, feelings, and emotions of adults. I care first and foremost about children. And I'm starting to see that many of the adults that are on these school boards, you know, these dignified individuals who don't like to be questioned. Simply put, they don't even like it when I open up a book and start reading from that book. Listen, I recently went to Idaho and spoke at a school board meeting in Boise. And let me tell you something, word is starting to travel that the quote-unquote "book banning pastor, yours truly", is supposedly traveling the country and, you know, berating and bludgeoning school board leaders around the country. That's not true. I do a simple, simple message at every school board meeting. What do I do lately, rather? I just read from the books that they place in the school system. Here's one in particular. The author is a man by the name of Alex Gino. Now, I might get in trouble by saying man because Alex Gino said in a video on MSNBC that he failed at being a man and a woman. Now, I don't know why in the world would you want to read a book from an individual that told you that they failed at being a man and a woman? If a person tells you that, you should immediately pause and ask that person, "Can I pray for you?" That's what you should do. You know, if someone tells you, you know, "I failed at being a man, and I failed at being a woman, but I still want to write books to pervert the minds of your kids." Well, you buy my book. And why in the world would Scholastic, you know, one of the world-leading, one of the world's leading publishing companies, you know, why would they want to print and publish content from a person who's evidently mentally ill? Who suffers from gender dysphoria? Instead of platforming these individuals and giving them the necessary reach to corrupt the hearts and the minds of our kids, we should make sure that that person gets the necessary help that they need. You're probably wondering why this book is titled "George"? And then the same book, you know, similar cover, the pages are pretty much the same. Inside of the book, it's the same book. But the author, in 2003, when he penned "George", you know, the landscape wasn't as inclusive as it is today. You know, Barack Hussein Obama hadn't come along and, you know, decorated the White House in rainbow colors and redefined, well, attempt to redefine marriage. You know, because I believe that marriage can't be redefined, although some may seek to pervert it. You can't redefine it because it's God's institution. And we're not God enough to change something that God has made a permanent fixture. I say this all the time, that gender is not fluid, it is frozen. Gender is not fluid, it is frozen. So, in 2003, I guess while Alex Gino, the author, you can see his picture on the screen. He was confused at that time on what he was. And so he's writing this book about George, and George really felt that he was a girl and he was Melissa. So, in 2021, once the, you know, the climate and the landscape had changed, eighteen years later, Barack Hussein Obama has become president. And then we're now, you know, under the leadership of President Joe Biden, who's trying to find ways to redefine sex and gender and promote people into, you know, the education sector who are pushing these ideologies as well. Now he feels comfortable to now title the book as "Melissa". Let's dig into this book just a little bit. But I also want to give you some of the background of Alex Gino. So, before we go to the book, let's start here. Alex Gino, this is his bio on his website, okay? You can go to alexgino.com to see this information. Listen to his choice of words, okay? It says, "Alex Gino loves glitter, ice cream, gardening, awful puns, and stories that reflect the complexity of being alive." You know, because life is just so complex. You know, probably especially for a person who failed at being a male and a female. He says, "They would..." They, listen to this. "They would take a quiet coffee date with a friend over a loud and crowded party any day." Notice the choice of words. He said "they". He's not saying that "I would", "Alex would", he's saying "they". What is he doing? He's saying that I'm, you know, essentially non-binary. It's "they", it's "he" and "she", you know, I'm not just one person. Now, biblically speaking, you know, whenever a person was filled with a demonic spirit of some sort, you know, that person would do weird things, odd things. One person in particular, the demoniac of Gudara, we found, we find him in chains, cutting himself. And you know, that individual needed to be exorcised. Why? Because he had a spirit in him that was crying out and saying all kinds of, all kinds of evil things, and he was confused. You know, and I hear the same thing as I read these words from Alex Gino. Alex Gino, yes, he has a mental illness, but I believe that he's demonically possessed. Listen to this. He said, "They would take a quiet coffee date with a friend over a loud and crowded party any day. A former LSAT tutor who never touched law school, Alex can still talk your ear off about sufficient and necessary conditions." Alex has been writing stories since before they knew the alphabet. There goes again, "they", dictating stories to their parents. "They", here we go again, "have always considered themselves a writer, but it wasn't until 2014 with the sale of Melissa that they had any idea that authoring books would be how they make their way in the world. They are grateful for the ability to spend their time and energy on something so close to their heart." This is the fifth time that Alex Gino has referenced the word "they". If that doesn't scream gender dysphoria, confusion, demonic possession, out of one's mind, I don't know what to say or how to cut it. But to tell the truth, that Alex Gino needs help. There was a time where a person was going through some type of deficiency, some type of mental illness. Maybe it's a person who strung out on fentanyl, right? You know, we wouldn't take that person who strung out on fentanyl and prop them up and say, "Yeah, go tell the world how to get strung out on drugs. We want to pat you on the back and make you the champion for being a dope head." Why would we do that? That wouldn't be good. But at the same time, Scholastic is exploiting the market because people know today that this kind of stuff sells. Confusion and the big lie around gender sells. So they are treating Alex Gino as a cash cow. And you know what? You know who the big loser is? Alex. Because Alex is being lied to. Alex is being told, "Oh yeah, you can be they. Mm-hmm, yeah, they. Yeah, you can, you can be a boy, you can be a girl, whatever you want to be. You could just be that thing." You know, we used to tell people that. You know, I heard it as a child growing up, "John, you can be whatever you want to be." Now, today, we need to be careful with that because people are making that more literal than ever. There are even some people who think that they can be animals. I went up to Loudoun County about a year ago, and there were some kids up there who were identifying as animals, as a cat. So, the child had to bring a litter box to school just to accommodate for his feelings of being a cat, right? And that is just so, just so unthinkable, so unimaginable. Why not tell that child, "Listen, listen, you can play with a cat. You can pet a cat. You can own a cat, but you can't be a cat." And so that's enough of Alex Gino's bio. I'm going to show a video of him as well. But let's dig into this book just a little bit so you can hear the mindset of Alex Gino. Once again, he retitled this book to "Melissa" in 2021. But I'm not calling it "Melissa". I'm not going to play along in the big game. I'm going to call it what I want to call it. I'm calling it "George". Here we go, page forty-four. "While Mom made dinner, George headed upstairs to take a bath." Here it is. "She took off her shirt while the tub filled, waiting until the last possible moment to take off her pants and underwear. She immersed her body in the warm water and tried not to think about what was between her legs. But there was bobbing, bobbing, okay, in front of her." What form of genitalia bobs when it's between a person's leg? Okay, you know, it doesn't take much intuition for one to discern and figure out that if you are a boy, your genitalia bobs. Everybody say "bob", B-O-B. And if you are a girl, your genitalia does not bob. If it's below your waist, now, if it's a young lady, and we're talking about her chest, okay, that's a different story. But we're talking about what Alex Gino is conferring upon children and saying in this particular chapter, verse four, chapter forty-four. Going over to chapter, sorry, page forty-four. Going over to page forty-five, it says, "She washed her hair with lots of shampoo so that the suds would cover the surface of the water. She scrubbed her body, stood with a splash, and dried off her fuzzy blue towel." This is page forty-four of the book "George" that was retitled to "Melissa". Now let's go to page forty-six. We'll read it from the top. It says, "They ate in silence at first. Scott was usually the one who talked the most at dinner, but a question was burning in George's mind. Over and over it played, 'Mom', she said after she swallowed the last bite of her hot dog. She barely realized that she had spoken aloud, 'What's up, Gigi?' George stopped. It was such a short little question, but she couldn't make her mouth form the sounds. 'Mom, what if I'm a girl?' George had seen an interview on television a few months ago with a beautiful woman named Tina. She had golden brown skin, thick hair with blonde highlights, and long sparkling fingernails. The interviewer said that Tina had been born a boy, then asked her whether she'd had the surgery. The woman replied that she was a transgender woman and that what she had between her legs was nobody's business but hers and her boyfriend's." So George knew it could be done. He knew it could be done. George had an epiphany. He caught faith when he heard this. George said, "Wow, since I'm watching someone on TV say that they can, you know, you know, go from being a boy to a girl, and as they use it sometimes, a girl to a boy, George believed that, you know, the same thing could happen for me." And so it says, "She had since read on the internet that you could take girl hormones. That would change your body, and you can get a bunch of different surgeries if you wanted them and had the money. This was called transitioning. You could even start before you were eighteen with pills called androgen blockers that stopped the boy hormones already inside you from turning your body into a man's body. But for that, you needed your parents' permission." I don't like to stick a pin there and say that there are some states now where you don't even need your parents' permission to transition. That's many of the things that's taking place right now. Many people are lobbying for transgenderism. They are saying that, hey, you know, these kids should have a right to transition void of their parents' decision. You know, this is crazy. Now, I need to add to this that this book was made available for children in Boise, Idaho. Watch this, grades three through seventh grade. So kids as early as the age of nine are hearing stories about transitioning. I mean, they don't even know about trigonometry, let alone why in the world are you talking to them about transitioning? And they're hearing simple things like, you know, "The interviewer said that Tina had been born a boy, then asked her whether she'd had the surgery. The woman replied that she was a transgender woman and that what she had between her legs was nobody's business but hers and her boyfriend's." And here it is. They're hearing that, you know, it can be done. A boy can become a girl. And so when you're nine and you're scratching your head and you're reading this, what is that doing to the mindset of that child? We are rewiring the mind of that kid and further confusing that child, making them think that you can change your sex. It's impossible. Hear me. Men can't morph to become women and vice versa, nor can men get pregnant. We are starting to confuse a man with a beer good with his ability to get pregnant. Men have a high concentration of testosterone, which comes from their testicles, the things that, you know, Bob in the water. Okay, in the bath water that we talked about, okay? And women have a high concentration of estrogen, and this comes from their ovaries. And, you know, if you want to just start pumping yourself with foreign chemicals, trying to become something that you're not, you can do that, but it's going to be detrimental to your health. And so I want to say this, my purpose in talking about these things, I am doing this because I love the transgender quote-unquote "community" more than these wicked doctors who exploit them. Now, what I say sometimes, you may say, "That's too brash. That's too harsh, Pastor John. Can't you just soften it down a little bit?" You know, maybe I can. But my passion for children and those who are being lied to, my passion causes me to just say it plainly and to tell people the truth. You can lie to people. You can put your head upon your pillow at night and feel good and sleep good, knowing that you are lying to people. I can't do that. I have to speak the truth at all times. And so this book, it's trash. This is filth. And this book is on bookshelves all around the country. It's now titled as "Melissa", and kids as early as the age of nine have access to this material. And so I went to the school board meeting in Idaho, and I sought to read about this book, you know? That was, that was, that was my purpose. And I tell you what, when I walked in to the building, I immediately saw four law enforcement officers. And I said to myself, "Okay, I'm noticing a trend. Now, whenever I show up, there's a high number of police waiting because I'm, I'm a bad guy, you know? I'm just some criminal, traveling around the country and turning school board meetings upside down." And they said, they said the same thing about the Apostle Paul. They said that he was turning the world upside down, but really, he was turning the world right side up. I'm pushing people towards common sense, common sense in education. So I walk in, I see the four officers, and they did what they normally do when they know that I'm present. They try to delay the school board meeting and talk about things that are not significant and/or important, you know, kind of drag it out just a little bit to see if I have to leave and see if they can smoke me out and get me to walk away and say, "Hey, I have to go." So two and a half hours, yes, two and a half hours into the school board meeting, a sergeant walks into the school board meeting, taps me on the shoulder, and says, "Hey, sir, can you come out and talk to me? I want to share some things with you before we get started in here." And I'm thinking to myself initially, "Okay, man, this is, this is major." You know, the law enforcement is now calling me outside. Now, I thought that he was going to take me into the lobby. He didn't take me into the lobby. He took me outside, outside. I went outside into the cold air of Boise, you know? It's cold out there. And I didn't have a big jacket on or anything. I had on my "God is greater than government" hoodie, you know? And that's about it. So I'm out there in the cold, you know, being interrogated by this sergeant, Sergeant Fisher, to be exact. And I like Sergeant Fisher, you know? I like law enforcement all around the country. I back the blue. I support the men and women who put on that uniform with the intent of protecting citizens, right? You know, there were many during the summer of 2020 who wanted to defund the police. Check my record. I never supported that trash. There were many who went along with BLM, Black Lives Matter, "Defund the Police", right? "Defund the Police. We need to get rid of these officers." You know, officers are nothing but hateful people, part of the KKK. We need to get rid of these pigs. You know, they treated law enforcement in a dastardly manner. I don't support that. I don't condone that. But what I'm noticing is this, that they are starting to weaponize law enforcement against the book banning pastor, yours truly. Now, I take offense to that because I think that these officers need to tell these school board leaders, "No, we're not going to do your dirty work. You're not going to use us as a tool to try to shut this man up as he seeks to just read from the books that are in the library in these schools." And so I'm outside, and the officer tells me this. He says, "You know what? We knew you were coming. We received notification. We're normally not here, but we're here this time because the school board wanted us to come. And I just want to let you know, sir, that if you get up speaking and if you go off topic, if you go off topic, then they're going to try to stop you. And if you don't listen to them, then we're going to come in and we're going to walk you out of the school board meeting outside and off the premises, and you will have to leave." I mean, just listen to the sound of that. Now, keep in mind, I was the only person who was told that that night. Now, I would venture to believe that I'm, I'm the only person in the history of school board meetings in Idaho who came to speak, who before they were able to have words, they were told that if you get off topic, that you would be thrown out of the school board meeting and you would be walked off campus. They tried to threaten me. Now, they did it in a passive, aggressive manner. In other words, "Yeah, I'm going to show up and you're going to see my uniform. You're going to see my handcuffs. You're going to see my mace. You're going to see my taser. You're going to see my gun. And we're going to tell you..." You know, look at this level of communism, you know? "We're going to tell you that if you dare to speak the truth, we're going to do something about it." They want to shut me up, but I can't shut up. I have this burden that God has placed upon my shoulders, and I can't shake it. I receive messages daily from school board leaders and parents and teachers who are saying, "You know what, youth pastor John? We can't find, we can't find a preacher in our city who's willing to address these issues, but we've seen your viral videos, and we want you to be our spokesperson." I've been asked to go and speak a couple weeks from now about an issue going on where a group of people are being sued because they removed pornographic books from a library. People are contacting me daily because they need support and they need help. And what am I seeing at these school board meetings? Law enforcement has now become tyrannical, and they've become puppets of school board leaders. And so I told, I told the cop, I said, "Listen, man, I'll be honest with you. Hearing these words makes me want to go off topic. You telling me that you're going to kick me out if I go off topic makes me want to go off topic." It doesn't make me want to be quiet and not speak and use my freedom of speech and, "Oh, now I'm shaking in my boots because they may kick me out of the school board meeting." Listen, I'll be the first to tell you that at some point, hear me, microphone check one, at some point, I might end up arrested for reading from one of these books. And you know what? I've never been arrested a day in my life. I'm a law-abiding citizen. I don't have a record, misdemeanor or felony, never. I've never been in handcuffs. I've never viewed the backseat of a police car while sitting in there, never in my life. But guess what? There may come a day where yours truly may find himself handcuffed for doing what? Practicing civil disobedience. And you know what? If it happens, let... If it happens, let it happen. I'm not gonna run from it. If it takes place, that's my lot. As I read the scriptures, I find men and women and those who were willing to be courageous and do all to get their point across for the sake of the gospel and for the sake of the least of these. And Luke seventeen two tells us, listen, it's much better for a person to have a millstone tied around their neck and to be thrown into the sea than for us to do harm to a child. Promoting books like this is harmful to children. Scholastic, you are demonic. I wanna put you on notice, Scholastic. Yes, you are a major company, a multi-billion dollar company. You've been around, I believe, since, what, the, the twenties? Yeah. Scholastic was founded in nineteen twenty by Maurice R. Robinson near Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I don't care how long you've been in existence. You've been in existence now for what? A hundred and three years, going on a hundred and four years? You bring in billions of dollars a year? I can care less. You are corrupt. You are a part of the problem and we need to put you on notice, put you on blast. And we need to come up with other publishing companies who do not, who do not seek to corrupt our kids. And so I make my way into the school board meeting after being outside for nearly, I don't know, twenty minutes in the freezing cold. I'm, I'm shivering, you know, shivering, not because of fear, but shivering because I was cold, man. And so we go into the school board meeting and I'm the first person up to speak. And I get up there prepared to speak and you know what? Watch the footage. You can see for yourself what happened.
Here tonight to talk about a book by the name of George.
We're talking about curriculum and I, our testimony is only on this agenda.
Books don't pertain to curriculum.
That is not in our curriculum. That is part of our lives. You're outside of our testimony.
So I've already been told you all were wanting to shut me down and keep me listening.
Okay, I have to cut the mic, please?
Because you all don't wanna hear what I said. Children in Garfield Elementary have access to this, this book.
I'm sorry, can we please have a step down?
Listen. Uh, why?
You have to follow our agenda. Let him speak.
I, I get a hundred and eighty seconds to speak. The snowflakes on the board don't want to hear truth. So therefore you're allowing tyranny to block me from speaking.
Please step down.
So you see it for yourself. If that's not tyranny, what is? Did you hear the gentleman who was, I guess, in plain clothes? Maybe he was a law enforcement officer himself. I kind of think that he was, maybe a school resource officer. He tells me, if you don't sit down, we're gonna trespass you. In other words, we're going to arrest you. For what? I, I get a hundred and eighty seconds to speak at these school board meetings. Some cities, they only give you a hundred and twenty seconds, two minutes, you know? And Wilmington, North Carolina, when I spoke there, they only gave you two minutes. When I spoke in Loudoun County, they only gave me two minutes. And so what am I going to do that's so damaging and hurtful and harmful in a hundred and twenty seconds to a hundred and eighty seconds? You know what I'm going to do? I'm going to pull an Ephesians five eleven. The Bible says, and have no fellowship with the unfruitful works of darkness, but rather reprove them. In other words, expose them. And so we're not supposed to go along to get along, see the issue and look the other way. No, we're supposed to address it and expose it and not be allies of perversion. And so they know that the moment that I walk into their school board meeting is gonna be an Ephesians five eleven moment. Revue truth is going to expose the darkness. And so they wanna shut me up and they're using law enforcement to help, to help them do it. This author, Alex Gino, I wouldn't allow him to read a book to my two sons or daughter alone for five minutes. All right, I wouldn't let him do it for one minute, for thirty seconds, for twenty seconds, for ten seconds, five seconds, for one second. I would not leave him privately with my children for no length of time. Keep in mind, keep in mind, these pages, these words, these thoughts, these ideas, these have, these thoughts have come from a person who's mentally ill. You know, they say you are what you eat. If you consume it, you will become it. If we allow our children to ingest this stuff, they will become it. If you watch filth all day long, you will become what you watch. The Bible tells us that the only thing that's in the world is the lust of the eyes, the lust of the flesh, and the pride of life. What we see impacts what we think, which will also impact our heart. Just think about it. What we consume becomes a part of us. You know, have you ever gone into a restaurant before? Maybe it's a, I don't know, a, a Chinese restaurant. Maybe it's a restaurant where, I don't know, it's, there's, the people are in there smoking or something. You walk into the restaurant for two minutes, you walk out and you smell like the restaurant. Maybe you didn't even consume any food in the restaurant. You just went in maybe to use the men's room. Okay, and you, you, you grabbed something to, to drink possibly, okay? And maybe you just went in and came out, you know, after using the restroom and washing your hands. When you come out, you're gonna smell like the restaurant. Why? Because you've been in. Hear me. If you allow this stuff in the school system and it, and it gets into the eyes, into the eyes of our children, into the heart of our children, into the mind of our children, they will begin to become what they have ingested. That's why we must remove this filth because it has a negative impact on our kids. Now, Alex Gino, I'm gonna show you a video. I'll let you decide for yourself. I said that I wouldn't let him, let him read a book to my kids. I said that. Let's see if you, mhm, yes, you. Let's see if you, my friend, feel the same way. Roll the footage.
If some liberal adult buys my book and puts it on the shelves because they get to feel good about themselves because they got involved in banning, there are still young people who don't have access to the book. And there are still people who need access to that book who don't have it. And to be told that what is wrong, wrong with my book is my existence is a real like hit to the gut, or that's not my gut, but it's a real hit to everywhere. I could have used this book when I was a kid. If I had had visibility of people like me as a kid, my life would be different now. So yeah, I wanna provide that to other people.
Well, I have a question for you. Was I right or was I being judgmental? Would you let him read a bedtime story to your sweet daughter Caitlin? Or your son Jeremy? Would you, would you allow Alex Gino, you know, to, you know, be the nanny for your family? To do the pickup, to do the pickup and the drop off for your precious kids? No, you wouldn't. Why? Because he needs help. He needs help. He needs prayer. Alex needs deliverance. And there is a God that delivers. There's a God that loves. You know, the Bible says that love covers a multitude of sin. There's a God that desires and longs to have a passionate relationship with Alex, not with them and they, not with all of these characters that are conjured up in his mind. No, 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 no. God does not have fellowship or relationships. He doesn't dwell within the heart and the mind of someone who has been under the influence of demons. No, God wants to communicate to the man within Alex. God loves him. The Bible tells us that God is long-suffering towards everyone, not willing that any should perish, but that all should come to repentance. God allows Alex to exist so that at some point he would be hit with the gospel. And once he's hit with the gospel, once the bullseye has been hit, somewhere within the recesses of his mind, within his heart, Alex is gonna say, what must I do? To be saved. That's my hope. That's my prayer. I'm on a mission. Yes, I'm on a mission. Some have labeled me as the bad guy. I'm the bad guy. You know, I'm getting a bad rap. But I'm not the bad guy. I'm the good guy. I'm the guy that cares more about the kids than the feelings of these school board leaders. I'm asking you to share this content, view it wherever you can find podcasts. It's gonna be everywhere. View it on X, view it on Facebook, Instagram, Rumble, you name it. We're gonna put this information everywhere. This podcast has a purpose and the purpose is to disturb the peace. We can no longer sit back and say nothing. Why? Because the time is drawing near. Now, if there's anything that we do too much of, oftentimes we say nothing when we know we should speak up. It's called apathy. But we can't walk in apathy. We, we must walk in truth. So whatever you do, my friend, don't forget to disturb the peace. God bless you. I'm signing off. I'll see you when I see you.